Cash call for all the actions.
I'm gonna call to order the city council meeting being February twenty eighth, year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three, six P. M. Invocation will be given by Pastor Jody Wallen from First United Methodist Church, led by item three pledge allegiance Texas pledge by council member Thompson. Those wishing to stand up and join us in the invocation can do so by standing up. Pastor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear God, we come to you tonight asking you to be present not only in this meeting place, but also in the hearts and the spirits of all of those who will be making decisions on behalf of the citizens of Odessa. We ask you for wisdom so that the decisions that are made here are wise and are based on good and accurate information, sound judgment, and intended for the benefit of our community and our people. We ask you for your guidance, O Lord. May you guide and direct those here tonight in choosing the right course of action that needs to be taken, and may you influence the decisions made both here this evening and in the future, decisions that will carry us forward in strength, unity, and for the common good of our community. We pray for peace, O God, peace that can only come from you as your presence is here in this meeting room, guiding and directing the thoughts and actions of each one of the council members and others who are in attendance. And we pray for hope, hope for a better day, hope that will give each one here and within our city something to hang on to, something to look forward to, to live for and work for, hope for a bright future where safety, love, and fulfillment will abound within our homes, our places of business, and within all of our schools. May your will be done, O God, and may we luck to you for your guidance and presence in everything both said and done here tonight. This we humbly pray and ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States. One nation under God, one indivisible.
May be seated. Having no proclamations. Let me read a few disclaimers. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of the items, agenda items before during the consideration of the item. Also, anybody wanting to speak on non-agenda items can do so by filling out a card and coming up to the podium for three minutes post declaring your first name and last name, and only your first name and last name for the record. You'll have three minutes to do so. Remind the council, non-agenda items, we cannot respond to the non-agenda items. We can direct staff if need be to answer or direct whoever wants to be able to speak on any issue that pertains to the city within our power. We do have someone that's willing to do so and can do so by coming up now. Donna? And just for the record, just post your first name and last name, just for the record, and only your first and last name. And you have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Donna Johnson. Donna Johnson, is that better? I'm here on behalf of my family. This is my son, Jackson Warnick. He was taken from us on February eleventh, seventeen years old. He got a hold of some fentanyl. We don't know where it came from. We just know that he lost his life senselessly. I want to address the council, and I want to ask what is being done about this in our town? We are grieving. I'm a body, I can be put to work. I don't know where to start, but it's got to stop. I'm a school teacher, I can go into the schools. I need to be directed in the right direction. This should never, ever happen to another family. So I don't know where I go, what do I do? But I need to address this issue, and I want to put a stop to it. And I have a huge backing. I just need to know where to go and who to speak to and what to do. My son will not die in vain. And that's what I wanted to say.
First of all, condolences.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We are all parents and grandparents up here.
Absolutely.
And we understand. What we'll do is we'll take your information, and we'll set up a meeting and tell you exactly what's going on within the city and outside the city, and how we're addressing the drug use and the fentanyl problem within our community.
Okay.
Thank you for being able to share your story. I know how hard it is, and our prayers are with you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sure that that's a consensus here on the dais.
Absolutely.
No mother, no parent should have to go through this. So thank you for your bravery for sharing and sharing your story. And I think that's the good first step, is that we all have to share those stories, how painful they are, because one, awareness is the first key. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And once again, please accept our condolences and our prayers.
I do, thank you very much.
Mayor.
Thank you.
OPD also is running regular sessions.
Okay.
On fentanyl and neighborhood groups. Maybe we can connect, and I can connect with you on that, because this is ongoing, present day.
Yes, it is. I was really sort of naive to the whole thing until this happened. I really had no idea it was in our schools. But I will, I will be a voice. I promised him, and I will be a voice.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item five consent agenda. The council view the consent agenda as posted.
Move approval?
I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda by Councilman Thompson, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to other items. Item eight, oh.
You wanna go back and talk about the Jazz B?
Yes.
You would need to.
So what we need to do.
You need to do a motion to reconsider.
Yes.
The consent agenda. And once we do that motion to reconsider the consent agenda, you're gonna do a motion to separate whatever the Jazz B is. And then we're gonna discuss it, yeah.
I apologize on this. There's an, yeah, there's an item here that we need to remove in the consent agenda. So I need a reconsideration for the consideration, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Swaner, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Now, Mayor, you're gonna say.
We're gonna separate.
We're gonna separate seven, the Jazz B, off of there, and then you're gonna approve the other one through six.
Yes.
We need to make a motion to take that off.
Yes, so basically what we're hearing is, we're gonna, I need to have a motion to remove item seven, considering appointment of two members of the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board?
I move to remove item seven, considering appointing two members to the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, remove item seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay.
And now, Mayor, we wanna go and make a motion one through six.
So now, we're going to do a re-motion for a consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Okay. Motion passes unanimously on the consent agenda from item one to six. So I apologize, I mean.
It's my fault, too, I saw that.
We knew that, and we just were going through the motions. So item seven, we're going to consider appointing two members of the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board, resolution. Mr. Jones, City Attorney, go ahead.
Okay, so what this is, is we have to do, we've gone back and we've done some research, and we've got to actually.
I'm probably loud enough anyway, so you probably don't wanna hear me, but anyway. So what we've gotta do is, we've gotta go as a board. By resolution, we're going to appoint two members. And I understand the two members are gonna be Hal Feldman and Councilman Connell. So that's what we're gonna do. Now, once that is done, there is gonna, the county will appoint their two members, and then, once they appoint their two members, they will decide who the fifth member will be, who will be the chairman.
And that's through a vote through the, through that committee?
Through the committee, yes.
Is there not a current chairperson for that committee?
No, I don't believe it is, it is accurate. I don't believe, I don't believe the county has gone through and properly passed a resolution appointing their two, or at least, they haven't, they haven't provided me any information yet.
They were pointing to Commissioner Stringer, but it just hasn't been done correctly.
But they still have to do the resolution, just like we do. Their process, their steps, so they have to go through it as well.
So what exists today is, so in the research, because we've been researching this for a while, in the research through the city, this was, this board was created through the legislature.
In nineteen fifty-eight?
Okay.
And then, what we're working off of right now is actually from nineteen eighty-six, I believe. And so, it, the board itself, the Jazz B board kinda went out of existence because nobody was meeting the last few years, and now that we've got issues around Schlemeyer, so we're just simply following the law. This is the process. This is what the code calls for, so the statute, so they're just doing what we're supposed to.
So the mayor then was Don Carter?
I believe so.
And so they laid out a process of how this is supposed to be? And so that process and that resolution calls for appointees, both entities?
Right, and each one gets two. We get two, they get two.
And then that.
And then those four decide the chairman.
The chairman.
Yes, and then they can go.
There has to be, there has to be a note of office.
Yes, and they're gonna do that in the next couple of days with me. We're gonna, and Miss.
We'll take care of that, so we'll do a resolution.
Right, tonight. And then we're gonna do the oath of office.
Ceremony, go through the city secretary's office. And then they get to me, because they have the swearing-in ceremony, they didn't have the poster meetings.
Right.
And their agendas and things of that nature. So right now, everything they've done is unofficial.
It's unofficial.
Resolutions have been made.
Right, and to my knowledge, right now, the Jazz B board does not exist, except when we get these two appointed, I believe Hal's out there somewhere, and Councilman, when we get them appointed, then what we will do is. Are you back there, Hal? Oh, there he is.
Well, we're not, I don't think we're being, I think he's being voluntold.
Yeah, he's voluntold, but, 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 but once we do that, then the county will do their two, and once they do their two, then we can actually, the four members can convene a meeting and choose their chairman.
Well, that's clear as mud. Okay. So does everybody, anybody, any questions, Councilman Connell?
And, and of course, Mayor, I think I've got an email chain to you that, you know, that, that is there laying all this out, but if you have any other questions, let us know.
So the thing is, has there been a research for this information? We thought we had it, but it wound up being the board between Mill and Odessa.
Yes.
And then initially, I thought we had seen something about nineteen forty-eight to nineteen fifty-eight.
Nineteen fifty-eight.
And then nineteen eighty-six was the last time it was formulated, and that's what we're working on.
So this reverts back to the nineteen fifty-eight?
No, this one goes eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven.
So, so the resolution tonight would be for the consideration of appointing two members to the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board. The appointees would be Councilmember District Four, Gray Connell, and Hal Feldman. Is that correct? From the Street Department?
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, thank us later. Now, we're gonna move on to other items. Item eight, consider bid award for twenty-three seal coat, R. N. Is this for sixty-six hundred forty-nine thousand square yards? How you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Seal code is part of this year's street maintenance program, and the bids for this project were opened on February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, and three responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was C. K. Newberry, LLC from Kennedy, Texas, in the amount of one million, nine hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and eighty cents. The bid was two percent less than our estimate, and our estimate for this project was approximately two million dollars. This year's seal code project consists of approximately six hundred forty-nine square yards of asphalt surface treatment on city streets, which is approximately twenty-two point six street miles. The Public Works Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to C. K. Newberry LLC in the amount of one million, nine hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and eighty cents, and I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Council, do we have any questions?
No.
Have a consideration for approval? I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to item nine, considering designating industrial district one B as industrial district. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, we're simply doing a sixty-day extension. There, the contract is still being worked on and everything with Grow Odessa, so we just need a sixty-day extension.
Okay, so we wanna go ahead and do a motion for both item nine and ten? Is that gonna be the same recommendation?
It's gonna be the same recommendation, but you would probably need to, we need to do it one-on, as it says.
So staff is recommending a continuing negotiation going on on the industrial districts. On item nine, do we have consideration for giving a sixty-day extension? Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Connell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item ten, consider designating industrial district one C as industrial district. Mr. Jones?
And again, Mayor, this is industrial district one C, and we're asking for a sixty-day extension. We're still negotiating with Grow Odessa.
Okay, do we have a motion for extending sixty days on item ten?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swaner, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item eleven, consider purchase for twenty-set bunker gear of four OFR firefighters using Lifeline account. Mr. Iger? Now, we didn't have Aqua here, so there's no reason to fall asleep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, attending city council members. This, I'm coming to y'all for consideration of purchases of twenty sets of bunker gear. So every year, we earmark a certain amount of money set out from our EMS Lifeline program. This is for the purchase of the bunker gear that protects us when we go into fires. Coat and pants.
Tenured chef life, if I'm not mistaken. Well, we'll see. Any questions, Council? We have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swaner, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item twelve, open a public hearing to consider approval for original zoning request by Johnny Lopki. Lopki or Lopki? It doesn't matter.
You want comments first?
No, 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 go ahead and do the presentation.
Okay. Very good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So real quick, I'll just kinda go through the graphics that we have here. This first one shows where the property is located and the two hundred feet that are around it. That gives you an aerial look. Is that all right? Thank you. By the way, this is Maria, pretty eight though. She's our planner, and she's been fantastic for us as we've been going through this transition.
Thank you.
So this is the, this is the, this is the lot that we're talking about on this first one, and the two hundred feet surrounding it, the aerial, and then the actual plat. No, that's okay. Okay, so that's the lot we're speaking of now with the two hundred boundaries. Sorry about that, y'all. There's the aerial, and then there's the actual plat. So, we're on two thousand twenty-three dash oh-three dash Z. So this site is currently designated future development, F. D., and is currently vacant and undeveloped. Land use, land use in the area consists of vacant land to the north, east, and south, and industrial development to the west. The applicant is John Lipsky. Owner and the purpose of the original zoning request is to develop light industrial properties in the area. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. The proposed original zone request is not contrary to the established land uses in the general area. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. The proposed light industrial development is not out of line with, and is consistent with development in the area. The proposed zoning district will be encircled by existing industrial development and will facilitate a compatible development to the existing land uses in the area. Based on the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this request with a four-e zero vote at the February two, two thousand and twenty-three commission meeting. There were notices that were mailed out, there were three of them. There were zero returned, zero number of protests, and zero number of approvals. So basically, that just means three went out and nothing came back. And this does not, this does, this, I'm sorry. Protest represents twenty percent of the area within two hundred, so no, it does not, I'm sorry. So this does not represent a number that is twenty percent of the area within two hundred feet of the zoning request. So with that, I can take questions, or however you like to proceed.
Any questions? Do you know what's going in on there?
Do you know what the project was on that one, Maria? I don't know that they've made that public.
Just curiosity.
You know, I've had.
Mayor, on the, on the agenda, it says open a public, public hearing.
Yeah.
So you need, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that, okay. Don't worry, buddy, we'll just get it back to you whenever you get a shot.
I would say it's just general development, looks like they're just. And they're just.
Okay, sounds good. This is an open public hearing to consider approval of the original zoning request by John Lopki, owner of Light Industrial Li on forty-eight point zero acre tract located in section thirty-six, thirty-seven, block forty-three, township two, Texas and Pacific Railroad, County Service, City of Odessa, County, Texas. Anyone wishing to speak on this, on this item twelve can do so by coming forward, stating your first name and last name for the record. You have three minutes, you can do, you can do that by coming forward now. Seeing that no one's rushing to the podium to do so, I will close the public hearing and open it up for council, does anybody have questions? If no, then I have a consideration for a motion for approval, if do so.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson for approval on item twelve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item thirteen, an open public hearing to consider approval of the original zoning request by Claudio Rodriguez, owner of Northwest NWC Services LLC, agent for Light Industrial Li on Lot Five, Block Twenty-four, west of the Interstate Industrial Three Forty-One, Odessa, County, Texas, southwest of the intersection of West Interstate Twenty Service Road and South Sergeant Avenue. Minister Smith?
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is just, again, just a map of the area with the two hundred feet around it that was, that notices were sent out to. This gives you an aerial look. Of course, this is the actual plat here. So this, this site is currently designated future development, F. D., and is occupied by industrial development and vacant land. Land use in the area consists of a church and light industrial development to the north, industrial development to the east and west, and vacant land and industrial development to the south. The applicant, Claudio Rodriguez, owner, NWC Services LLC, agent, and the purpose of the rezone request is to maintain industrial uses on the property. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. The proposed zone request is not contrary to the established land uses in the general area or the land use plan of the City of Odessa's master plan. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. The proposed light industrial development is not out of line and, and is consistent with development in the area. The proposed zoning district will be encircled by existing industrial development and will facilitate a compatible development to the extent land uses, I'm sorry, to the existing land uses in the area. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff has no objections to the request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request four-zero at their February two, two thousand and twenty-three commission meeting. Again, notices were mailed out, four of them, zero were returned. So this protest represents, does not represent more than twenty percent of the area within two hundred feet radius of the zoning request.
Thank you, sir. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the original zoning request by Claudio Rodriguez, owner of NWC Services LLC. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak on this, item thirteen, can do so by coming forward and stating your full name for the record, can do so by coming forward now. Seeing that no one is coming forward to speak on this item, I will close the open hearing and entertain a motion for approval with the now by the council.
Mayor, before we get to that motion, when property owners go through the process of requesting zoning for whatever type of usage, are they not required to let us know what it is that they're gonna build on that necessarily?
Well, not.
Is that required?
I don't think they need to specifically, they can do so, but, you know.
They, most of the time, the property owners submit their request for zoning. They do just a general consensus of letting us know, you know, it's gonna be commercial, it's gonna be residential or industrial. They do not specifically have an idea as to what is actually gonna go on the property, but they're just giving us a general.
Now, under light industrial, if you go in here, you'll see a list of what.
Can go.
Can go in.
Can go in.
It's pretty, pretty, pretty big, so if in your packet, it will be in there, and it'll show the listing, so basically what we're doing is padding light industrial, and it gives them this category, several categories of what can go in there. But, you know, and so we, because there's probably a range of things they want to, they just wanna qualify, and then they'll, it's like San Antonio, nobody wants to see an empty lot, just build something, we'll figure out what we'll put in it later. And in this situation, it's just a light industrial.
Well, thank you all for educating me, I'm, I'm learning.
Maria, am I correct in saying that this actually is just rezoning it, and then the intent is actually to come back at a later date for an S. U. P. for what is called workforce housing, by specific use permit?
Actually, this property is, has not, is not zoned yet, it's, this is an original zone to a light industrial. The customer is coming later on because they wanna add workforce housing on the same property. For that use, they need to have a specific use permit, so they will be having to come back and present this as well.
And this is city-owned property?
No.
No? Okay.
This is owned by Mr. Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, so this is item thirteen, entertain a motion to approve, disapprove on item thirteen.
So move.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
By Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 14. This is an open public hearing to consider approval for the request by Carlos Enrique Isaac Onet, owner of the specific use permit to allow a beauty shop, one chair accessory use in a special dwelling district, SPD zoning district on Lot 29, Block 18. As the minister states, this is the sixth filing on 3900 Height and Drive.
Yes, sir. So again, here is just a overview of the property with a boundary of the 200 feet, all of those that would have received a, a card to give their opinion, one way or the other. Here is the aerial, just so you get an idea. And then there is kind of a site plan that this individual has given to you so that you can see that as well. So this site is currently zoned special dwelling district, SPD, and is occupied by a single family residence. Land use, and the land use in the general area consists of single family development. The applicant is Carlos Enrique Isaac Onate, owner, and the purpose of the request is to consider approval of a specific use permit to allow a beauty barber shop, chair accessory use in the special dwelling district, SPD zoning district. A site plan has been prepared, that's up for you there, and indicating the location of the existing single family residence approximately 1,650 square feet. On the property, the, the property is total square footage is approximately 6,000 square feet. The proposed shop will have a floor area of approximately 19 and a half by 22 inches, 22 feet, 4 inches, 439 square feet and will be located next to the existing residence. No additional structures are proposed for this development. The proposed beauty shop will require one paved parking space along with two paved parking spaces for the residence. The building setbacks and lot coverage of the existing and proposed structures meet ordinance requirements. The planning staff recommends adoption of the following conditions required. Parking spaces need to be paved nine by 18. One operator, being an immediate family member, the person who must live in the dwelling, shall be allowed to work in the shop. Hours of operation shall be limited from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. All applicable building codes need to be met. Placement of the salon will follow all city ordinances and owners will obtain all necessary permits. Adoption of the site plan, review of the permit upon receiving neighbor, receiving neighborhood complaints. This is a temporary permit and the city council shall have the right of termination for violation of the terms and conditions of the permit or because of the negative effect of the use of the neighborhood after a public hearing. Based upon the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request four zero on February 2nd, 2023. There were 22 notices that were sent out. The number of protests that came back, there were two. Number of approvals was one. And this protest does not represent more than 20% of the area within, within 200 feet of the radius of the zoning request.
Okay. This is a open hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item 14 can do so by coming forward, stating your full name for the record. Can do that by coming forward now, you have three minutes. Just state your full name for the record, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carlos Isaac, I'm a licensed barber. I'm actually working in the mall, Music City Mall. I'm here asking for a permit because I got many clients. So the mall usually open at 11:00, so they don't got early morning, early morning schedule. So I got many clients. So I, I'm trying to, after I, I left my, my kids on the school, like at 7:30, start cutting hair in my own place that I want to prepare for that. So I'm here to ask you, please, if you can give me this permit because I want to keep working on what I've been doing for 15 years. Everything is going to be very discreet, I don't want to change nothing outside the house. There's going to be no poster, no lights. I know that it's not a commercial area, but everything is going to be very discreet. I'm going to prepare the, the paving and everything for the cars. So I don't think nothing wrong with it, I just want to do the right things and got my clients. It's only be one chair. It's going to, I work with the Boxy app, so every client is going to be one by one. I can do at least, before noon, I can do at least five, five people and then work in the mall. And sometimes when I'm off, I can still cutting hair on my house. So I, if you please can help me to get, obtain the permit for my one chair salon barber. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And council, any questions?
Yes, I, I do. I hate to say it, but Google Maps, when you can look around, it's like a periscope and you can actually look around the neighborhood on 3D. That's very residential. So my concern to you would be, and I think you had mentioned it, is keeping the commercial advertising down. You would almost be working word of mouth.
Yeah, I'm actually, I got the Google map, but I had to say, I work in the mall and what they.
I'm asking you about signage, I just think it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to have any signage, okay.
He already said that he won't now, he advertised any signage.
I said that, I said that.
Just wanted to confirm that because that's appropriate.
Uh, uh, there'd be, there'd be no allowance for that.
Yeah, according to the ordinance, he's not allowed to have any type of signage.
Yeah, that's what I said, no signs, some, some very difficult, no lights, nothing. I going to respect the neighborhood, how, how it, how it is. But I want to do the, the right things, you know, because people may be coming, going inside, that, that's only what I need.
And your scheduling too, you know, you can schedule that appropriately so people, one person's coming, leaving, another person's coming and leaving. So again, it keeps the traffic down, the parking.
Yeah, I will, I will, that's what.
It's a courtesy to your neighbors.
I will, I will.
Well, you know, in the end, I mean, the thing is, it's tradition that the city councils in the past have granted permits, you know, for one chairs, you know, two. In the end, I think what everybody's concerned is in the neighborhood on this council is that the neighborhood isn't overwhelmed by vehicles coming in and out. That's why we always have the right, if there's a violation and it becomes too busy, meaning that you're very successful and you're taking up everybody's parking spot and it becomes a nuisance, then we have the ability to pull it.
No.
And that's why we hold, hold that reserve. That's what it was, those are concerns, if you read the, the, those concerns that ones that wrote back that, you know, they, they didn't specifically say that, but that's the cause we've got, we've got them back on backyard mechanics and things of that nature.
I understand.
And so, you know, people live in their neighborhoods because they want to be in their neighborhood and they want to have to be living next to commercial. So traditionally, you know, one, one chairs have not been an issue in, in this city. I think we've mostly done women's chairs. This first one I've actually seen, you'll be doing men's haircuts, right?
Yeah, men's, only men hair.
You can move in and out.
Yeah, 25, 30 minutes, that depends. It's not that busy, you know. It's one by one, because they have, I work with the app, Boxy app, and it's going to be one by one.
The only thing I wanted to add to that too is thank you for coming forward and wanting to legalize this.
No.
Not trying to do it secretly. And I admire your entrepreneurship.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We know whose district this is in? Is this two or four? Is this two, District 2 or District 4?
Asman Estates is District 4, actually.
District 4, okay. We're sitting on the bed up here. So, okay, any other questions?
It's District 4, because it's right across where I'm at.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Questions? Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Oh, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come and speak on this item can also do so. Seeing that nobody is coming forward to speak on this issue, I will close the public hearing and I will consider a motion to approve or deny from the council.
What's our motion?
Have a motion, is that a motion for approval? I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Cornell, second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. We're going to move on to item 15. Consider economic development agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and Taylor Sutton Services. Mr. Crowe?
Honorable Mayor, distinguished council, thank you so much for your time tonight. Tonight, the Odessa Development Corporation comes before you for approval of a possible economic development grant between the Odessa Development Corporation and Taylor Sutton Services. The project, Taylor Sutton Services proposing the construction of a new maintenance facility, office, dispatch and customer service facility and shall operate a business that manufactures forklifts, container handlers and truck lifts that fall into the classification of the NAICS code 423850, which does fall into the 4A tax guidelines. The company has agreed to retain 31 full-time equivalent jobs with an annual payroll of $2,244,440. In addition, within one year following the effective date of the contract, the company shall add 24 full-time employees in Ector County with an annual payroll in the amount of $1,609,440. The company agrees to own and lease and cause improvements to be constructed on the property at 2810 I-20 Service Road and commits to expend $2,400,000 for the expansion project as defined in this agreement. The grant that's been requested and that was recommended by the Odessa Development Corporation Compliance Committee is $862,579. That will be paid out one-fifth each year over a five-year period of $172,515.80 as they are found to be in compliance with the agreement. As the Economic Development Compliance Committee and the Odessa Development Corporation Board have already voted unanimously for approval, it is our recommendation that council approve this grant request.
Council, any questions? You have the contract before you? Any comments? Consider a motion for approval with the now? I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Mata.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 16. Consider approval of the professional services agreement with Cobb Finley and Associates Incorporated for the design of I-20 Segment 2 utility conflicts. Mr. Felman?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Tech Dot is designing the widening of I-20 from the west side of Odessa to the east side of Midland. And what that's going to entail is there's going to be three lanes each direction on the main lanes of I-20. The frontage roads will be two lanes, but the frontage roads are converting to one-way operation. What we're talking about tonight is segment two of that entire project, which basically goes from Parkway East to County Road 1300, which is just a little east of Fodry. What has been found so far in the design work is that there are multiple utility conflicts, water sewer reuse line. So Tech Dot is giving the City of Odessa a deadline of November of '23, November of this year. Yeah, which is quick, to design the relocations and to finish the construction of the relocations. So what this agenda item is tonight is for a professional services agreement with Cobb Finley and Associates, who is already working on the, the I-20 projects, so they're familiar with it, so we don't have to bring them up to speed. And, and what this design contract is going to do is do the design work for the relocations. This design contract is for $176,407. And when the city is done with the design work and the construction work of these relocations, Tech Dot has told us that this, these cost amounts are reimbursable.
Got that in writing?
Yes.
That was going to be my question. Why are we having to pay for this?
Yeah, we're, we're having to pay upfront, but we're getting reimbursed.
Well, how fast can you get it designed and bid?
Well, we've been talking with Cobb Finley and the, on paper, it looks doable. They're trying to get the design work done by June because then we've got to go out and to bid for the construction project, award it, bring it to you for approval, do construction. On paper, it shows that we can get it done by the deadline.
Well, not only.
Probably not this time.
Well, not only the delay on the construction when they reach us, but a payment is going to be, is not the easiest to, to acquire a check from the tech, from the state. So where's the money coming from for the, now, you're talking about 176 for the design. We don't even know what the construction is.
Correct.
So.
So, so the, the money for the, the design work is identified in the water repair and replacement account, it's an existing account.
Okay.
That's where we're using this money from.
So we're going to move money from that account.
To pay for this.
So then, when we finally get the design and everything, the cost for the relocation, depending on what that amount, where we're going to get that from?
I don't know if there's enough money in that account or not, so we'll see when we get to that point.
We'll figure it out when we get there. So we'll start playing the shell game when we get there.
Yes, sir.
We can't have one without the other.
That's right, and we're on a tight deadline.
There's a promise of reimbursement, the thing is, is that I'll take bets on when that check comes in after it's all done. Okay?
Make it an over and under.
Yeah, yeah, an over and under, exactly.
Over six years or less than six?
So, so we have a.
Why are they so late coming to us with this deal? I mean.
I don't know if the, the design has taken longer than expected, but this is, this is the game plan we have in front of us.
Thanks for all the warning. At their timing and everything, there's nothing we can do about that.
No.
So, so we're considering approval of professional services agreement with Cobb Finley and Associates Incorporated for the design of I-20 Segment 2 utility conflicts. This is in the amount of $176,407 for design utility adjustments that are conflicting on the I-20 widening project. Do we have a motion for approval?
Shall I move?
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, do we have?
Second.
Second, second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor indicating by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. It's one of those things we don't, we don't want to do, but we couldn't. Item 17 is to consider a work contract for 2023 pavement rejuvenation. For 2023 pavement rejuvenation project consists of approximately 514,961 square yards. Arvind, I say it fast, I always mispronounce it. Go ahead, sir.
This is another item for this year's street maintenance program. And the Public Works Street Division is planning to use pavement restoration technique in lieu of seal code for a portion of the preventive maintenance program. This product is approximately half the cost of seal code per square yard and offers a good service life. It is designed to be applied to low-volume streets and our intent is to use it on many of the streets that have not been sealed coded or have not been sealed in several years. And this year's rejuvenation, pavement rejuvenation project consists of approximately 515,000 square yards of asphalt surface treatment on city streets, which is approximately 21 street miles. The contract provides a turnkey project and pavement restoration from Burnie, Texas is the sole applicator of reclaimed material in the state of Texas. The staff recommends award of contract to pavement restoration as the sole applicator of this material for the contract amount of $647,451.25. I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Council, any questions? Any comments? Consider a motion for approval? I have a, I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Haney.
Yes, sir.
All in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, sir. We're going to move on to item 18. Consider award of contract for the 2023 friction seal. This is a friction seal project consists of approximately 174,572 square yards of asphalt surface treatment on city streets in the amount of $628,459.20. Go ahead, sir.
And this is another item for the street maintenance program and the Public Works Street Division is planning to use friction seal technique for a portion of preventive maintenance program. This product is asphalt sealer with friction fine aggregate for asphalt surface maintenance and extends the life of pavement for a number of years. It is designed to be applied to residential streets. This year friction seal project consists of approximately 175,000 square yards of asphalt surface treatment on city streets, which is approximately seven street miles. The contract provides a turnkey project and American Road Maintenance is the exclusive. roadway applicator of friction seal material in the state of Texas. The staff recommends award of contract to American Road Maintenance as the sole applicator of this material for the contract amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Any direction? Consider approval?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Swann, or second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed in Kenny Basane, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item nineteen, consider authorizing continued participation with Steering Committee of Cities Served by Encore. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, we are already a member of these hundred and forty cities. We're one of a hundred and forty, and this is the Steering Committee of Cities Served by Encore. Basically, what they do is they, they work on our behalf, the city's behalf, consumer interest, in proceedings, as far as like the transmission of electricity and things of that. We're already a member, but I just wanted to bring it before y'all so y'all could just see it. Usually, every year, we do it by purchase order, but I thought this would be kind of good for y'all to see, the new members to see.
So, this is the one, so this is the, who works on behalf of doing utility rates?
Yeah, Encore, yes. And, and this, this is basically our membership dues every year that we pay.
Yeah.
And we're one of a hundred and forty, and I, I believe in y'all's packet, y'all got a whole list of everybody scattered throughout Texas.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, so I'll consider a motion for approval of twelve thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents for our annual membership to the Steering Committee. Have a motion by Councilmember Heaney. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed in Kenny Basane, aye. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item twenty, consider approval amending the downtown infrastructure grant agreement with High Con Tower. This item will approve the amendment of the amount of thirty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. Ms. Pietro.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
We are here today to see, we're asking for an amendment to a downtown inf, I can't even think of the, infrastructure grant that was previously approved in two thousand and twenty-one. This additional thirty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty cents is for the fire suppressant and the fire alarm that was accidentally left out of the original contract. It is something that we have taken to the O D C and has already been approved through them.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Any comments? Okay, so I will entertain a motion for approval now. I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Matha, second by Councilmembers Swann, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed in Kenny Basane, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Also, Dennis, there are probably about thirty, forty-five days opening up. It looks awesome. We've got the glass, it's coming in, and bar tops are in, furniture's coming in next week, equipment's coming in, so it's coming quick.
Drinks on the house?
Sir?
Drinks on the house?
Sure, if you can get up there. Thank y'all.
Strike that for the record.
Okay, strike that for the record, that was, yeah, no.
Okay, miscellaneous, item twenty-one, City Manager Benchmark Presentation by Mike Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening, sir.
Y'all work quick, real quick. I saw twenty-one agenda items or twenty-two, and I'm like...
You've been here since three o'clock.
This is, this is, this is going to be a long, long night. Well, I'm Mike Wilson with T two. With me are a couple of colleagues, Michael Lunt and Dr. Aint Sykes. The purpose of tonight is to discuss with you our benchmarking process, and so this is a step that needs to be completed so that we can finalize the job description for city manager. What I've learned is that it's been quite a few years since the job description's been updated, so this is going to be a very important step. You know, second is to identify what key accountability is, attributes and those things are needed for the job, and that's what Dr. Sykes will talk about, but we need your help. So, one of the action items from tonight is we need to form a benchmark committee. Our recommendation is that we include two members from city council, that we include two direct followers of a city manager, so that's going to be your department-level directors, as well as two external stakeholders and/or citizens, so that we can get a full view of what everybody's looking at in the new city manager for Odessa. So, Michael.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the main values that we offer through T two is conducting a comprehensive assessment of the city, conducting a comprehensive assessment of those folks that were ultimately able to recruit and apply for the position of city manager, and then presenting you all, the decision-makers, with all of that information so that you can make the most informed decision. And that's the main part of our process that we're trying to go through with this.
Thank you. So, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Sykes. He has too many qualifications for me to try to cite, a lot of initials and acronyms, but I'm sure he'll tell you a lot about his experience. One thing is, he's one of fewer than a hundred people in the world that can do this type of diagnostic assessment, so with that, Dr. Sykes.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. That, so my name is, most people call me Dr. Hank, and I am, like they say, a lot of initials, but basically, I'm a mental scientist, I'm a behavioral psychologist, and I am a certified analyst in a lot of different areas of the human being. And we have a time-proven process that we have used worldwide with organizations on a federal, state, city, local basis as well. And we literally select candidates that are the most qualified candidates in a way that no one else can. And so, we have a very unique approach. Normally, what organizations will do is they will look at a person's resume, which I don't know about you, but every resume I looked at never said they were fired from a job or anything else negative, so it's skewed in one way. And then, the second unreliable resource that organizations typically use is the interview process. And again, the interview process is always showing the best side of the candidate, and we're really not able to identify who's best for this job. There's other many factors that are included with why what's called hiring accuracy is not very effective in getting the most qualified person in any job, is that normally, we hire who we like. And so, if we like the person, we say, oh, this is a good person, we like them. So, we, we approach this completely differently, and the results, measurable results are that productivity overall for the new employee, if you will, for that position increases by thirty percent, and so productivity by thirty percent, and then retention increases by fifty percent. And so, it's a significant improvement, and typically, organizations are saving hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, on getting the right person in the right job. And the reason why we're so unique is we start with the job first, and we do what's called a job benchmark, and we look at what does the job call for, with what talents are required by the job. Then, how does the job motivate the individual? And so, these two areas are key, because if the candidate-to-be employee has the talents and is motivated to do a job, they'll automatically be more productive, they'll like their job better, et cetera, and why we get the results that we do. We also include a third attribute, and that is the behaviors of the job, one of the ideal behaviors of the job. And that's why we're requesting, so who makes up this job benchmark? That's why, as Mr. Wilson suggested, that we have six people that are what we call SMEs, subject matter experts. They know the position, and they know the position also on what they want it to be, so this new position, so they have the vision of what do we want this to be? And then, I literally will work with them, and typically over Zoom meeting, that, and help identify what are the key accountabilities or what we also call high payoff activities of this position, and help these members to really, this group, to really understand the job. Don't think about the individual before, during, or that it's what the job is, what the job calls for. Once we get them focused, and typically, it takes an hour, hour and a half, on what the job qualities are, they then take an assessment. So, every individual takes an assessment, and in that assessment, what we're doing is we're extracting what are the key talents required for the job, the motivators of the job, and the ideal behaviors of the job. We then electronically average that out, and we come up with this job benchmark. So, now, we know what the job calls for. We now take the candidates, and usually, we need the resume just to make sure they've had the experience and the type of, you know, things that we want, the years' experience, their past, but before we even meet with them, which also saves us a lot of time, is we run a tri-metrics on the candidates that qualify best based on the resume. Those candidates, a tri-metrics measures each candidate's talents, motivations, how they're motivated, and their behaviors. And we can take up to five candidates and electronically compare the job benchmark to the candidates, and I can take a look at that twenty-five-page report, and on the first page, I can tell you who's the most qualified candidate for that position without ever meeting them, interviewing them, I don't even need to see the resume. And so, this has been just the most effective, and again, IBM, I've used this with governments, that the amazing results that happen here will, I think, really benefit the city of Odessa, where you'll get the most qualified candidate for the city manager position. So, with that, any questions, comments? What did you like best?
Counsel, any questions on the, now, I have a question on the...
Yes.
On the two members, two members of the council, two department head, directors, is what your suggestion?
Yes, sir.
And the two citizens of, two citizens?
Yes, sir.
In the community. What's best, best way of going, going about that? There's seven of us here.
Right.
The directors, how many directors do we have? And who makes that decision? Is that council, you know, the city manager, two citizens? We just drop names in the hat, pull them out, draw straws? How, what's the process?
Well, so, you can approach it in a few ways. We've had some approach it where they selected a director from public safety, because that typically represents about half of your city, and then a representative from the local government services with the city, so you can approach the directors from that perspective.
Okay.
As far as your citizens, you know, I would really just talk amongst yourselves and identify, you know, some, someone who may have, may has interacted with the city quite a bit, or with city management, or maybe you select a general citizen, maybe a business owner, so you can get both, both areas. And then, from council, you know, really, it's, I don't know if y'all volunteer or if you're voluntold for different assignments, but I would just collectively come, come to together to, to see which of you would like to take on this endeavor. It'll be a great learning process for whoever does, go, go through it. We talk a lot about the behavior sciences, how people are motivated, how motivation drives performance and workplace satisfaction. And if my goal is, I would like to have the benchmark complete by a week from Friday, so I believe that's March the tenth, so we can move on to the next step.
So, basically, this benchmark is take away the human factor, and you're basing it basically on, you're creating what, what the, what the community or in this committee, what are the criteria they want to see in the job?
Yeah.
And so, you're creating the job?
We're creating the job.
And, and the principles of in the job?
Yes.
Then, you're going to go match it out with candidates that apply.
Yes, and a better term than I would use, maybe for clarification, sort of the human, it, it takes out the bias, and so...
The one fuzzy feeling, I have a good feeling about this person.
Right, yeah, yeah, and so, it takes out that bias.
Never made a mistake on that when hiring an individual, right? I had a feeling about that guy, or she, and she went in for the interview, or he went in the interview, hey, I gotta go back to the house and pick something up and never came back.
Yeah, and, and so, that, and that's the first part. The even better news is that this assessment now manages the expectation of the new employee that we have, and they understand what really is being qualified, and we actually include questions are generated based on that in order to help them. Yes, a question?
Dr. Sykes, I'd read somewhere this is actually E E O C approved, right?
Yes, it's all E E O C approved.
Harbor is, this is some of the things that they do, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. It's E E O C approved. In fact, there's only three E E O C approved when you're hiring like that, and that is the interview, the resume, and this, a diagnostic tool. And so, you're literally dealing with the one that most organizations, whatever, aren't using, and because they don't realize that, like, there's a limited talent pool in, in America and anywhere in Odessa, and the kicker is, nobody knows how to measure talents. Well, now, we do. And so, now, we actually know who the most talented person is and not who interviewed the best or had the best resume on there, and this will help them also, the one-up manager and really kind of all of you with the city manager. You'll be able to understand this individual right away, how to communicate with this person, how not to communicate with this person, how to manage this person, and how to motivate him. You will literally have three easy-to-read pages to where you'll understand who you're dealing with right away. And so, normally, that takes about six months, and it's still not as effective as your understanding will be about this person, about how to effectively manage, motivate the person. Meanwhile, they also understand what the job is calling for. And the good news is that, you know, nobody's going to be perfect and hit the job benchmark perfectly, however, that now we know where they are lacking, and the good news with talents is, we can actually improve talents, and so, we can help develop the person into even a better employee position and have a better result because of it for the city of Odessa.
In your presentation, you gave out two percentiles of being able to, there was one was a percentage of retention. What was the other one?
Yes, yeah, so, two factors, and the first one is productivity, and productivity on average increases by thirty percent.
Because of this process.
Because of this process, because you have the best qualified candidate to fill this position, and they are, they have the talents to do the job better than anybody else that we were able to find, and they're motivated to do the job. Now, the other interesting note here is, some people will, some organizations will measure behaviors and, and use that as a basis. However, behaviors are actually the third least important variable, the most important is the talents. Do they have the skill level to do it, and then, are they motivated to do it? It's not really so much the behaviors that is involved with this. So, what you end up having is, not only do you get the best candidate, but you also have the best way to communicate now with your city manager, effectively manage and motivate them, and, and then, the second part is retention. And so, because they're, they have the skills, so they like doing what they're doing, that they're motivated on doing it, that our retention increases by fifty percent.
There was another question when I asked about how do we go through the process in the department directors. Mike, you said something about twenty percent consists of safety.
Well, tip, typically, in any city, you know, one, one of your heavier areas is going to be pub, public safety. At least from a budget perspective, it usually represents about fifty percent of a city's budget.
True.
Sometimes more. So, what we've done in the past is selected one director from public safety, and then one from your local government side.
Okay, and, and the government side will vary, whatever we decide, what, where that person will come out of?
Right, right, so, you have a lot of departments, and, you know, whether it's billing, whether it's, you know... Right, right. So you have a lot of departments and, you know, whether it's billing, whether it's, you know, public works, et cetera, et cetera. I would just, those are two pretty distinct, different functions. And, you know, one really makes, you know, just has such a large imprint on budget. So it would be good to have that represented also because of the nature of what they do. You know, a lot of what they deal with is, is very critical, very urgent, mission critical to a degree. So it would be good to get that perspective and also your local government perspective.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess we can come up with a process, you know, we can do it as council in open. Determine the two, the two council members and then we can do also the directors. With safety, it means it comes down to two people. You got your police chief and your, and your interim chief and Jason Cotton. Directors, you know, we have to get a list. I don't know how we determine that one. Then the council, you know, it's a matter of, somebody's gonna get voluntold. I know, I don't wanna serve on it. I would like council member Swan or from a female perspective. Now, I'm not trying to be biased or anything or sexist, but the thing is, is that, you know, we have that opportunity and then we can draw straws from the rest of us. Anyway, I mean, I think that would be easy, you know, for the council to do. I'm taking myself on, I, I want the council to be involved in this. The directors would be police, police department or OFR, correct? Is that, that would be correct?
Yes.
We can make that decision, we can leave it up to the interim.
Well, weren't you saying you wanted somebody from public, one, one for public safety, then another like a department?
General government.
Yes, yeah.
From gen- from general government. But there's two to choose from, candidates from the public safety, that's what I mean.
Right, and that's, yes.
And then, and then the, from the general department, you know, we can leave it up to them or we can leave it up to the interim city manager to make that decision. Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say, I, I agree.
Are you volunteering yourselves though? Oh, okay.
I, I think it should be done in the open when those selections are made and, you know, and, and we could have a special meeting or whatever.
Well, I mean, I like, you know, if, I mean, is there any reason why we can't do it right now?
If it's done by March the tenth, the longer we wait, the longer it's gonna take.
Yeah, because what's gonna take the longest is the citizen one. I, I, I mean, I'm thinking as we're speaking about this.
It's a presentation, that's, that's what I'm saying. We can't really take it to action. So we may want to call a special meeting next week or, or.
Okay. All right, so, 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 well, there's nothing we can do, it's a presentation, so we can't take.
So, so we're, we're pretty agile. So even if, if we're able to get the committee names ear- earlier next week, we can still probably have that benchmark conducted, that meeting, if we can work around everybody's schedule by the end of the week, which is what's important.
Well, what we're tasked with here is we have next Tuesday, which is the seventh. Because right now we're trying to ascertain everybody's spring break schedules. So I think Ms. Grimaldo has sent out an email, we need to get everybody's schedules for spring break. We wanna hone in on December seventh, I mean, December seventh, March seventh, if possible. And so if we can do that, we, we, we can call that meeting and be able to do this and, and send out that, put the committee together. Let me ask this question, this is a presentation, we also, council needs to discuss how we're going to find two citizens out of this city. Do we come up with two names, drop a man and then reduce them from there? I think that'd be the, the most easiest to do. You put in two names, two names, two names, two names, and then we go down the line and we, we all eliminate one and we reduce until we come up with a consensus. I think that's the fairest thing.
Okay.
Does it, does that, does it appeal? I'm trying to follow the, the, how we award monies to agencies, that's, that's what I'm trying to follow. Okay, so then the directors, we want to leave it to the interim city manager to do that? Or does the council wanna handle that in the same fashion? Because we, I don't know the directors personally. What do you think would be the best?
I, I would almost say get Mr. Bernard or come up with four people or five people and then do it the same way.
Okay.
Maybe a little background on them, the resume, what, I don't, you know, I mean, that's, that's the only way I can think about doing it that makes any sense to follow what we, what we're gonna do.
Okay. Well, the public safety side, my only thought was that Chief Gurkis being here the longest, you know, Chief Cotton or interim Chief Cotton is kinda in his spot, so.
I, I was leaning the same way, I just didn't wanna put a bias in there and so.
Well, I did.
Well, you've got your, you've got your one and so.
I just think he's the most qualified, cause he's been here the longest, yeah.
Now, what, you know, looking forward, what our goal is, if we can complete, complete the benchmark by the tenth, then we'll work with your HR director along with ci- city attorney in refining a job description that will have to come back to you all because you're going to need to approve that.
Prove it and then, then we can send it out.
Correct, and one, once that's approved and then, you know, we'll start advertising for the position. But, but you'll also have to direct, you know, do you want state, state level recruiting or do you want national level recruiting? So that's another decision that you guys make.
I'm voting for the state. I want people to know when they're applying for Odessa, Texas, they know exactly.
I just don't wanna have to fly anybody in at night.
Exactly, that's why.
We'll get them out of here by dawn.
That's, that's exactly.
Mr. Wilson, would you happen, by any chance, have maybe three samplings of other city manager job descriptions that, that have been developed through your.
Job descriptions? Yeah, we can get, we can get some examples that will work with the HR director and.
Mr. Hurst has already provided two to you, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Yep.
Now, what, now, we've gotta be careful here is, you know, what, what, what the needs are in another city.
Are not the needs here, you're absolutely right.
Don't merit the needs of this city.
And that, and that's the, the amazing thing with the benchmark is because of how we construct the benchmark committee, it doesn't just take in the unique talents, motivations and behaviors associated with the job. How, but that's also reflective of the culture in the community because what we value all comes from, from that, that base and how we've been influenced in the community and that's how we identify those talents that we're looking for in that leader.
Mr. Wilson, when you say benchmark, what are you talking about? The city, the city manager that is the turnaround city manager, what are you, what are you talking about when you say benchmark? So everyone understands.
Right, so that, that will really tell us, the benchmark will now. In the course of the comprehensive analysis of the city, you know, that starts to lean us, you know, into one of three categories of type of person that you may look for. You can look for a turnaround person, you can look for a sustainer, which is everything is perfect, we just need somebody to steer the ship. Or we can look at that growth, that growth person, we're experiencing explosive growth, so we need some, you know, someone with maybe a different, unique skill set. Now, in the past, people would come in and do a comprehensive analysis of an organization and say, okay, well, you need a growth person or you need a turnaround person, but they're just basing it on one half of the equation. What the benchmark does is now we're looking solely at the job. And we're getting input from not only the focal leader, which is you, you're the one-up supervisor for a city manager, but also the direct follower, which is department directors. They have to work for this person, but also the community who is served by the, by this person. And that is, that gives you the clearest picture of what does it take? You know, what is the city manager for the city of Odessa? What comprises a successful city manager for the city of Odessa? How can we communicate to the selected person what superior performance is? And, and this is no fault of any city because you can walk into any city or organization that hasn't used our process and ask people this. If I walk up and say, tell me, what does it take you, what do you have to do to achieve superior performance in your job, in your organization? How many of you in your career had somebody come up and say, for a superior performance, which is perfect, you have to do A through D? I never received that. The vast majority of my colleagues haven't received that. Maybe some of you haven't received that. Mr. Vasquez, if you received it, you had a great leader. You, you really did. So that's what, that's what we're doing. It's a holistic approach where it's not just the job, but it's the job, it's the community, it's your internal stakeholders. But we have to take care of the person who is ultimately selected for the job. They have to know what is good performance. And if we cannot identify superior, how can we identify subpar? You can't. You just can't. So does that answer your question? I, I know I went way out there with it.
No, no, it does, because in today's world, everybody's just trying to hire somebody who will show up the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah, the benchmark is not.
Yeah, we're, we're not looking for a body, you guys.
No, exactly, that's right, we're not, we're not somebody to sit in the position, we need someone with the characteristics that Dr. said. Okay.
So one more question.
I was gonna say too, also.
Since we haven't seen a timeline or anything and you guys have been on task for ninety days at least. So my question is, how much longer will this process take? Sounds like I think it's gonna be, if we get one by the first of the year, we'll be lucky.
No, Ed, well, so our goal is to have your city manager selected by the middle of July, if not the first of August. That's what our goal is. If we can stay on task with these dates, then all deliverables will be achieved by that timeframe. Yes, sir. Well, let's say July, August, because if we have a week or two delay, that's gonna push it back on the benchmark. Mr. Cotton?
What's going on?
Well, Mr. Jones was talking about what is the benchmark and what comes to verbalize that. It looks to me like it's that perfect skills and personality. And that would be actually a definition of benchmark.
Layman's, yes, absolutely. You summed it up very, very well. Very well. Thank you for that because I can get a little too scientific, even the doctor tells.
The simplistic version.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah, who's the other councilman?
Well, I don't know yet, but I, I've voluntold you, so the rest is for, for us to discuss. Okay, any other questions? Mr. Wilson, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation and that update.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna go move on to item twenty-two, appointment of boards, Ms. Grimaldo. I have a question. Has Ms. Gomez agreed to, to continue?
We've left a message, I'll reach out to her again.
Well, that may be the answer then. I haven't looked, I, I just have not looked. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, for the tax increment, reinvestment zone, the TERS appoint Rachel Miner. And for the traffic advisory committee, appoint Angie King.
Angie King?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have two appointments for item E and F, tax increment, investment zone, it's Rachel Miner and traffic advisory committee, Angie King. Good. I have a motion for approval of those two, two names.
I so moved.
I have a motion by council member Vasquez, I have a second.
Second.
Second by council member Swan, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, kidding by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. We're on item twenty-three, since there is no more business before the city council, do I have a motion for adjourned? I have a motion by council member Swan, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by council member Mathau, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, kidding by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned, be careful going home. All right.